Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sunshine Coast Regional District Committee of the Hall meeting for Thursday, March 27, 2025. It's now 9:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that Sunshine Coast Regional District works, lives, and plays on the unceded territories of the Seashell and the Skowamish Nations. Before we get into the agenda, I have been told that our presentation, our delegation this morning from the Capitolano Student Union has had difficulty in arriving here. There's been some issues with the ferry, and they, I'm just going to check with the recording secretary. Have we heard from them? No? Okay, so we're going to strike that part of our agenda, and I'm going to encourage them to contact the executive assistants here at the Sunshine Coast Regional District to reschedule their delegation. So we have an amended, do I need to vote to strike that? I don't think so. Okay, we have an amended agenda in front of us. I'm going to look for, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of accepting this amended agenda. Okay, no votes mean the affirmative. We're going to move right along to reports. Item 4.1, the Water License Amendment, Lower Crown Raw Water Reservoir, and I'm going to look to staff to introduce this. General Manager Rosenbaum.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you. One of the items that, one of the regulatory requirements for a lower crown reservoir for the project that is led by the nation is that the S R D applies for an amendment to their, one of their water licenses that we currently have for Japin Creek. And while there is no final confirmation yet from the S R D that for construction, and there's a lot of work still to be done to confirm the visibility of that reservoir, the province indicated that the earlier we at least submit the application, the better, because it might take a while for them to process it. There's no legal, financial, or other liability for the S R D doing so. We can cancel the application at any point in time if the S R D or the Seashell Nation decide to not advance the reservoir project. And I'd like to know, I'd like to make the board aware that on April 17, there will be a dedicated meeting, committee meeting on the reservoir project, and so more, even more technical information will be provided at that time, but staff are able to answer any questions you might have at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. I'm going to look to my fellow board members and see if they have any questions or comments about this report. There is some recommendations, there are some recommendations on page 19 of our agenda. I'm going to turn to Director Gabiass.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Report is pretty self-explanatory, no questions, and the recommendations do make a lot of sense to me, so I will move the recommendations on page 19.
Thank you. I see a seconder. We have a motion on the floor. I see no hands, so I'm going to call the motion. All in favor? Very good. None opposed? Very good. Thank you. That passes. Moving right along, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is 4.2, Staff Report Recycling Depot Service Delivery Model. And it's authored by Manager Sol, but I'm going to turn to staff and see if anybody wishes to, I don't see Manager Sol in the meeting, so I'm going to turn to staff to see if anyone would like to introduce this to us.
Thank you, Chair. I know that Manager Sol is on his way here, so if we can pause for a second, then I'll make sure that he can do the introduction.
Very good. I am fine with pausing. We're going to, okay, let's see what 4.3 has to say. Manager, Manager Bellerby. Oh, never mind. There's, there's our manager. Thank you, Mr. Sol. Yes, delegation kind of threw a little wrench in our works this morning. Good to see you. So we are looking at our recycling depot service delivery model. There are recommendations that come along with this, but I'm going to look to you to give us Cole's notes on what we're looking at. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So previously, the board had directed staff to investigate alternative options for our Recycle BC depots that we have on coast. However, since then, Recycle BC, who the S R D has a contract with to collect their program materials, has updated their incentive payments, which has changed sort of the economic argument a little bit for investigating alternative options for the recycling depots. So given that we have some pretty serious priorities this year in terms of trying to figure out long-term disposal, update our solid waste management plan, staff are proposing that we keep the current model for recycling depots, given that the financial argument has shifted a little bit, and focus on our priorities for this year, which are solid waste management plan and long-term disposal. I'm happy to take any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Manager Sol. Director McMahon.
Thank you. Yes, this seems to me like a great example of something we can actually postpone, as opposed to all the other projects that we really don't want to postpone, that we're desperately trying to juggle. And I would note that the residents are very, very happy with the service that they are receiving, at least at Gibson's Recycling Depot. So I have no difficulty with moving the recommendations on page 23.
I see a seconder for that, and I do not see, this one's an easy one. Thank you. I do not see, oh, sorry, we have a question from the alternate director from Gibson's.
Thank you. I have two questions, not directly to this question, but I think that my first question is, the, the recycling that is collected through the curbside program, where does it go to be sorted out?
Yeah, so although the S R D doesn't have curbside recycling, we don't manage, it's just District Seashell and Seashell Nation Government District, that curbside recycling is also part of the Recycle BC program, so it's all under the same umbrella. It's a large provincial organization that was established through provincial regulation. And what happens is that material goes to the same place that our depot material goes to, which is a facility in New Westminster currently. It gets sorted, separated, baled. There's a plastic recycling facility, which is also in New West, one of the few in North America, and that facility grinds it up into pellets, which are then sold to manufacturers to incorporate into new products.
Thank you. Chair, I have a second question.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, my second question regards this table that shows Gibson's current cost recovery, 67% in Seashell, 92, Pender Harbor, 41. I really, can you explain, I mean, first, the reason for the difference, and what does it really mean, the cost recovery, because we're starting to think it's how much they pay and the costs we have, and that's the difference, and why? Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the way the incentive payments work from Recycle BC is we get paid for the amount of material that gets shipped out from the depots, so that, that rate can fluctuate depending on the tonnage that gets shipped out. So depots that don't have a lot of volume, like the one in Pender Harbor, see less incentive payments. However, our contracts that we have with the depots are fixed monthly rates. And so when you look at the, the percentage spread there, all that's saying is that the monthly contract price that we have with that depot to collect that material is higher than what the incentive payments are that we get from Recycle BC. So essentially, they're not shipping out enough material to fully cover the contract costs that, that we incur with our agreements with those depots.
Thank you. It seems to me that it's, it makes a lot of sense for our, our citizens to recycle. It helps to pay for that recycling system, as well as diverting more from our landfill as it gets close to the brim. We do not have a motion on the floor yet, do we? We do? Okay, very good. Sorry. I see no other hands, and so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Manager Sol. I'm going to move on to 4.3. Oh, am I? Yes. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask Senior Manager Bellerby to introduce the Indigenous Engagement Requirements Funding Program, Modification Agreement, and Year Two Funds. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Through the chair, there is funding available for Indigenous engagement through emergency management. We, we already have funding for the previous year, and now there is funding for 2025 into 2026. The province in March reached out and said that we can roll over the funds that are not spent into next year's and make it into a two-year agreement. So that's, that's basically all we're doing right now, is amending the previous agreement to extend for one year and ask for one year's extra funding, too.
Thank you. So we, I know the report mentions an emergency, what's the, what's the wording? There's a day that's going to be scheduled for us to do some of this work, April 2nd or April 16th, I believe, is the
Emergency Preparedness Day?
Emergency Preparedness Day. Can you, can you tell us a little bit more about the timing for Emergency Preparedness Day?
From, from my understanding, the, this is not for the Emergency Preparedness Day. This is a separate event proposed, and it's more of a community engagement day. The, the April events are more based around the Emergency Management Week type events, which are normally quite busy. This is a separate event. This is, from my understanding, is to be held in the fall.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm going to turn to Director Stanford. You have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. These look like really good programs. I noticed that we haven't implemented year one's funding and programming yet. We're asking for a second year. How does this impact staffing and other projects? Will there be delay of other projects for emergency education and community initiatives if we move forward with a second year of funding for this?
Thank you for the question. Manager Bellerby.
Through the chair, the, the staffing has already been put aside and, and taken into account for these kind of events, so that by taking this funding, we're not going to tax the emergency program in any way, shape, or form. It's already covered.
All right, thank you. So we have a recommendation on page 27. You have a question?
Nope. I'm going to move the recommendations on page 27.
Very good. I, I just wanted to discuss that it is, the number six of the recommendation does say that it's going to be brought forward at this afternoon's board. And, and so we can discuss the, the, the next steps at that point. I have a, I have a motion, I have a seconder, I have no more questions. Very good. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good. Thank you. That, that passes. Thank you, Senior Manager. Our next item would be Board Correspondence, and I have Executive Coordinator Armitage to introduce that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to request board decision to adopt the revised correspondence policy as presented. Staff, we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
And I am looking to see, oh, there we go. Director McMahon, you have a question?
Oh, I have lots of questions. On page 38, it says that formal invitations will be placed on an agenda, but in my experience, we don't actually do that most of the time, partly probably due to timing. We had a formal invitation from the Seashell Nation to a celebration at the Long House recently, and that did not appear on an agenda. So I'm not sure why we would need to do that. It, I'm just curious why that is in the policy.
Our C A O is raising her eyebrows.
Thank you, Chair. So in the policy, it does save for consideration. So I think sometimes there is, when the chair reviews or when correspondence or invitations do come through, there is a process that it goes through, so hence the procedure that's on there. And depending on the type of event and what the ask is of the board, I think there is a call mostly by the chair, as far as whether or not it'll be placed on an agenda or not.
Director McMahon, did you have a follow-up or?
I have more questions.
Okay, well, I'll come back to you then. I'm going to go to Director Stanford.
I have a general question. I noted that part of the process of this proposed policy is that all correspondence is reviewed by the C A O. I didn't get a sense of how much correspondence we get on a weekly basis, and how much time that takes as part of the C A O's overall responsibilities.
Thank you. That's a very good question. We don't want to overwhelm our C A O. Maybe she has some help.
Thank you, Chair. Some weeks, we will just get a couple of pieces of correspondence, and other weeks, we might get a dozen pieces of correspondence. And so we, we have a weekly process, and we do have our executive assistants who do the initial vetting. We also have correspondence that might come through divisional departments, but there is, again, a process internally that everything gets filtered through that channel.
Thank you, C A O. And when a piece of correspondence is, wants to be brought to the attention of the board, it's put in our reading files, and we're notified. That's, that's my experience.
Correct, or it's placed on an agenda for a decision or for more information or public awareness.
Great, excellent. Thank you. Director McMahon, you have another question?
Yeah, well, it was along the same lines, because we have a lot of email addresses. There's parks@scrd and planning@scrd and so forth. So when you say all correspondence, do you mean everything? There's a, Dear Parks, there's a tree down in Cliff Gilker Park?
Go ahead.
So this is, does not consider service requests or information requests related to a service. That's not what this particular policy encompasses. This is, you know, things informing or asking something of the regional district. It may be something where the board is included in some correspondence, and so we, we have a different protocol for that. And so, yes, there is a nuance to it, but it's not for service type of requests. We, that, that would be quite unruly. That would be in the thousands.
Thank you. Yeah, that's more of an operational thing, and, and the staff deals with that as they come in. And we, I'm going to go back and forth between my two directors here, Director Stanford.
I'm referring to page 34. The proposal is, I think it's 4.3.1. It's hard to tell what is crossed out. If multiple or duplicate items are received, comments may be summarized in a staff report for appropriate agenda. My question is, in all cases, we have, I'm just confirming, we have access to originals, or that there will be a list of identify, like identities of the people that are corresponding, and that would be made available in all cases, because this is public correspondence. I'm just confirming that.
Sorry. C A O, do you have an answer?
It sometimes depends what's included, because there, there might be some elements of privacy that we have to ensure, and so that is part of the consideration on, on how things are placed on agendas and what's made public and what's just put in the reading files. So it really depends on what the situation is, and yes, some correspondence and/or requests might be preceded by a staff report to address the item. So whether or not it's transit-related, I'm
Director, yeah, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just to clarify, it was just to that specific item, that you may have like a couple of dozen letters of the same ilk. They're public, for public consumption. It's always good to have a list of, of the names of the people that have provided that public correspondence, so I wasn't referring to anything that had privacy issues attached to it. So just making sure.
Yeah, and those would be included for the directors in their reading files. Yeah, so they were aware of everyone.
Thank you. Director McMahon, you have a question?
I just thought, some of the wording in here is historical, like stamp all correspondence with a received date stamp, since, you know, probably 90% of it is electronic now. That's kind of quaint. But maybe, you know, for future revision, it would say stamp all paper correspondence with a received date stamp. And I haven't seen anything in my mail slot for quite a long time. It's, yeah. But, you know, in general, it's fine.
Thank you. I'm going to take, oh, we have a, Director Toth has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Not a question so much, it's just a couple of comments. The, the comment about invitations going on to an agenda, 4.13.1 mentions, you know, invitations of casual natures are just, yeah, added to the, to the reading file. But, you know, stuff that would come to the board would be things that we have to perhaps choose a delegate to attend on behalf of the board, right? There's a decision that needs to be made there. I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of this as it is. When I think about stamping correspondence, even the electronic correspondence we receive requires some form of receipt identification. And so it might be an electronic watermarking or whatever records management does, but it's still, everything has to be documented and processed. So lots of operational details that I'm, I'm not really interested in getting into the weeds on. So I'm going to move the recommendation on page 31. Thank you.
We have a seconder for that. Director McMahon, you have another question? Nope. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, and I'm looking for any other questions? No? I will call the question. All in favor? Very good, that passes. And before we go any further, I just wanted to make a motion to accept all reports. We have a, we have a seconder? Very good. All right. All in favor? Good. Just a little bit of housekeeping. We're going to move on to, we have the three correspondence pieces. Oh, 4.5, Staff Report, the S R D Corporate Work Plan and Board Priorities. This is a, this piece on page 42 is, is a tool that is being introduced, has, has been introduced since the fall for our, our use as a decision-making tool. I am overjoyed with the work that's gone into this. I think it's one of the, one of the best pieces that I've seen in my two and a half years at this table. I'm going to look to our C A O to introduce this piece.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so the S R D has been working on a corporate prioritization tool since the summer of 2024. And so the iterative versions have come through the budgeting process, and so the first was through our pre-budget in late October. And so since that time, there's been some further refinement to the tool. And so what we're bringing to you today is what we feel is a version for us to start to use and integrate within our organization as far as a reporting tool and a prioritization tool. So it serves two purposes. And so the purpose of today is to really just approve this particular version and to start to work with the document as we go forward. In the past, we've used what's called the Budget Project Status Report, but it didn't In the past, we've used what's called the Budget Project Status Report, but it didn't really incorporate all the elements that, of the undertakings that staff are doing. This does not also include all the undertakings such as operational type of projects, and there's still some refinement to do with this particular tool. But I think it gives us a good idea as far as aligning our specific projects, the Board's priorities, and the staff's resources that we currently have to do those particular initiatives. So there is some acknowledgement, too, that in the regional district model, it's a little bit different than a municipality potentially where the corporate plan does not necessarily depict the departmental plan. So we look forward to introducing in the next iterative versions some alignment between what a true departmental plan looks like versus the organization. I think today's version, you are seeing what the Board has signaled are their priorities, including mandatory items, so things that we have to do here at the regional districts such as safety or regulatory compliance items. So that's how it's been categorized. There's also some acknowledgement that there are items below the red line, and what the red line depicts is the staff capacity within the organization for the projects that have been identified here. And so it doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily stop work on all the items that are in progress below the red line. So things like the Half Moon Bay Hall, it's well on its way. It's been procured. There are service implications to deferring certain type of projects, so that is why in the recommendation today that staff will bring back a subsequent report as far as what the implications are. However, we do want to empower and get the Board's approval that those projects that are below the red line, that are zero or have not started, that we just put all our efforts to the things that are above the line, and when capacity allows, we'll start to work down the list. So that's the, what's envisioned with the tool is so the Board can also see that things getting completed and things moving up the list. So again, this tool is the first step, and we want it to also be a reporting tool, which that element is not necessarily fully fleshed out yet. So I know Directors have indicated for future reporting, what's different than what we've reported on in the Budget Project Status Report is really just things about, you know, red light, green light, yellow light. So just knowing if there's any emerging issues or things to be considered and where things are going really well, just kind of a thumbs up. So looking forward to what that's going to look like, and we think every couple months is, would be the duration. So there's some meaningful progress. So happy to take any questions and want to thank everybody's very hard work, the Board and the S L T team, because it's been quite an endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. And I, with apologies to Director McMahon, I've had, my Vice Chair has asked to be next in line. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Your Board Chair would like to make a few comments. This has been a huge undertaking by the S M T and the Managers as well as us Directors. Like, we've done a countless number of workshops on this project. It is a big undertaking to change the way that we're looking at these projects, the way we're reporting out on these projects, and the way we're going to consider our workload and our horsepower available going forward. I do want to appreciate all of the time that staff have spent on this because maybe not everybody sees the full value in it. You know, maybe even some days, we don't see the full value in it. But I did express to one of our Directors yesterday that, you know, we may not even see the perfect version of this in the time remaining in our term. This is going to be an iterative process. If we never start, we're never going to see any progress on it. So I'm quite happy to see this finally sort of coming forward with some direction on some of the projects that are above and below the line. I know that there's a lot of nuances with the things that appear to be on hold based on where they are on the sheet, i.e. below the line. But I think going forward, as the months and years progress, the document and the actuality will be a lot more aligned than I think the starting point that we're at today. So I am supportive of this tool, and I'm supportive of us moving forward and finally sort of activating this document for the organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I shared the concept of this with some of my peers at L G L A in Richmond, and there was a great deal of excitement about this tool. And for me, it does help to really organize the organization. And I look forward to making informed decisions based on the information that populates this tool. I'm going to turn to Director McMahon. She has a question.
Yeah, I do. I appreciate that this is a first attempt at sort of mapping out something that's hugely complex. And I'm just going to take, as an example, line twenty-three, the review of the subdivision servicing bylaw, three twenty, presumably involves, well, it says two hundred and fifty hours, but presumably that's from several departments because it's, you know, infrastructure and planning and maybe corporate services and so forth. So it's difficult to measure just in terms of staff hours. However, having said that, I note that there are several items that staff has put a note that they could be deferred to 2026. Is staff looking for direction from the Board on this? How are we going to move forward with that? And if we do, if we were to decide to defer some of these, would it open up some more room below the red line?
C A O, Perro?
That was not what staff had envisioned for today. I think it's, that is part of what this process could mean. I think this is first to see and absorb and to, I think, have the Board be able to see the information now and to contemplate whether or not those could be things next time that we'd want to do. I think one of the things we also discussed, Chair, was that deferred items don't necessarily mean we're amending our financial plan. It's just, we're kind of just do tools down for right now and focusing energy to a different direction. So we didn't envision we'd do that because it's not cohesive. There were some comments in there, so it's not a collection of all the departments that have done that work. So I would advise not to make any recommendations to that effect today.
Thank you. Makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of work that goes into this. There's a lot of work that goes into making decisions based on this. But I believe that this forward-facing document is going to really help with the transparency of government so that the people that we serve can see the work that's being done and how we are trying to create efficiencies within our, within our organization in order to serve them better. So I'm going to look to, I'm going to look to Director Gabiass for the next question.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to add my flowers to all the flowers that have been sent out to staff. Thank you so much for all the work on this. This is a massively complex task, and to have been able to distill it into this one document, I think is pretty impressive. And I can see myself using that in the future with no problem and with some improvements, I'm sure, that will come as, as we learn to use it. Because this is brand new, so as we put it into play, we'll be able to make some small tweaks here and there. So yes, thank you very much. And I have a question about the, so I'm looking at page fifty-six. So deferred to 2026 after the Board prioritization workshop? Seeing that some of the, I mean, like, there's the first one on top, which is at ninety-nine percent complete, what, can, is there anything that, because I'm, if it's, if there's one percent missing, is there a reason why we wouldn't just try to get it done and off the list? Or is there, are there reasons why these are better to be deferred, even if they're at, like, five percent off completion?
This is a good question. I'd like to see how, I believe staff will probably be still looking at things that are really close to the finish line, and I'm going to ask my C A O to illuminate us.
That was one of the elements for the next iteration, is bringing considerations, and that would be one in particular where we would finish it. Because of the various steps that we took to get here, that might been something that was identified to potentially be deferred, and what was maybe not provided was maybe how far along we were. So that's what we need to do, is kind of calibrate things that are below the line and potentially deferred, that we might want to acknowledge that we're just going to carry on with it. And that's, I think, the moderation of this particular, it's like a teeter totter, right? Like, we're a little bit off kilter here, and we're going to, we're going to try to balance it out. So, yeah, the, there are some that are in the defer that we're going to carry on and give some implications as to this, the ones that might have to, we just need to complete them this year, and there might be others that it's okay to just defer them. So we want to bring some more information as far as implications to the Board.
Thank you. I've got a short speakers list, Director Stanford, then I'm going to go to alternate Director Di, sorry, DiAndretti, and then I'll go to Director McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. I, too, am really glad to see that this work plan is out in the public because of all the work we've done and trying to explain to constituents why some things are moving forward and some things aren't. This is an excellent tool. I do think it needs a few public statements to fully clarify to interested parties how we use this tool, because it could be seen as also, from the public, a way of going, well, my project's below the line. I don't get, it doesn't get done. So it will crystallize that kind of pushback, and I'm hoping that we can get, you know, four or five statements to help us work through the best way to communicate a tool that is iterative, that we continue to work with what goes above and below the line and really what that line means. So I'm hoping that's included as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to go to alternate Director DiAndretti.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to praise many other Directors did, and I appreciate this type of tool. Anything that brings efficiency and hopefully effectiveness to of the way all these projects have been conducted, I think is amazing. And I really appreciate the piece of communicating with the public. This is very important, especially because the public has been a big critic of inefficiencies, right, of S C R D without sometimes understanding the amount of projects in play. So, yeah, that's it. I support, and I also support a good communication that goes along with that. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. I look forward to seeing you at this table again. Director McMahon?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. I mean, the red line is obviously kind of malleable because one of the items under the red line is the Gibson's Rec Center roof replacement, which is on our agenda for this afternoon as a contract award. So obviously, it's not really below the red line. So first question is, when will the next quarterly report be coming forward with an update on this? And then the second question is, if we have burning concerns about items that are below the red line, how best shall we get them addressed?
Chief Administrative Officer? We have some questions.
Well, yes, I think there is acknowledgement that we, again, we're well on our way on some items that are below the line, and we're going to carry on with them for various reasons, and we want to bring some more information there. As far as the burning concerns part, I mean, I think having a one-on-one and getting further information as far as what, what those are and staff might be fully aligned, and that would be part of the next iteration. I also believe there is one other question, which was, when we will see the next iteration? Like the Budget Project Status Report that came every second month, we do envision that this be presented every two months, so the next iteration would be in May. That would just give enough time to see some meaningful progression. In May, you'll probably see a little, it won't quite be just reporting. There's going to be the options part and discussing more of the implications of the below-the-red-line and maybe some further action needed and decisions by the Board. From the other perspective of quarterly reports, I think was also mentioned, so the quarterly reports for Q1 are scheduled for April, so this wouldn't necessarily align with the departmental quarterly reports. If that is envisioned, we could potentially consider that as part of our recording as well.
Thank you. Director Gabiass?
Thank you. First, I want to move the recommendations on page forty-two, and then I have a quick comment. Oh, great.
Thank you very much. So we have a seconder for that.
Awesome.
We have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to look back to Director Gabiass for some comments.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I just heard behind the scenes that we'll be able to, through this tool, look at what's been completed since the last iteration. So the next iteration will show us some completed projects, too, if my understanding is correct, which I really am excited about. I think we need to talk about what gets accomplished as well. We're so focused on what needs to be done that we often don't take the time to look at what's getting done or what is being done. So I'm very looking forward to being able to see how we're progressing and celebrate our wins.
Thank you, Director Gabiass. I asked for this myself this morning, and I think it is a really, we have to celebrate our wins. We have to celebrate the work that we're doing. We need to, we need to really recognize how well the organization is working. And so I'm going to look to Leonard Lee, Director for Area A.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering if we would put completed projects at the end of the sheet, but if we do get this spreadsheet with the completed project tab, that does it, too. So going forward, will we get the Excel spreadsheet with all these tabs? Is that the plan?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Board currently has that, and I think what staff are trying to balance is what we're going to provide publicly, because we want to ensure we provide as much publicly as possible. So next time, there'll be probably the grander version made public. We just want to make sure that there's clear alignment and comprehension as far, and we're not confusing matters. So yes, we will be including completed projects on the next iteration.
Thank you. And so we, you have a follow-up? No? Okay. We have a, we have a, and we have a motion on the floor, and this is going to give staff the green light to use this tool to, to help us to create efficiencies across the Board. Do I have any other questions about this? No? I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Very good. That passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. We are now going to four point six, solid waste management plan update. This is strictly for our information, beginning on page fifty-seven. Manager Saul and... Thank you. And Sierra Rempel, thank you very much for joining us.
Hi, yes, I'd like to introduce Sierra to introduce the report here before I run through a few quick slides.
Thank you. So in British Columbia, solid waste management planning is a regional district responsibility under the B C Environmental Management Act. Solid waste management plans guide how a region will manage solid waste services over the next ten years and includes guiding principles, strategies, actions, long-term disposal options, and service costs to, to complete the items that were laid out in the plan. The purpose of this report is to provide the Board with an update on the solid waste management plan update project. Management Plan Update Project.
Okay, this might be as good as we we get in terms of screen sharing. So essentially, as Sierra mentioned, we wanted to provide the committee with an update on where our solid waste management plan process is, and some of the critical interdependencies and other projects that are aligning with this this work. So to date, we have completed work on developing our guiding principles. There has already been public engagement on this work. Currently, we are developing our strategies and actions that form part of the plan, and that's what is included in this in this report. Those strategies and actions will go out for public engagement later, once a more thorough complete draft is being developed and that the the board has seen that completed draft. And then the other project that is being worked on currently is our two feasibility studies into vertical expansion and waste export off coast. That work is critical to the solid waste management plan, as we have to tell the community and the province what our disposal option or options are. And hopefully, these feasibility studies will provide the the board with enough information to make a decision on the the path forward here. Once all of that work is completed, there will also be a financial component to the solid waste management plan that will indicate some of the big picture cost ramifications for doing the the work in the plan. So I also wanted to kind of run through what is not included in the updated plan, and that is an alternative long term disposal option, such as a new landfill or lateral expansion to seashell landfill. And it's not that these projects are kind of done and finished, it's just that the timelines that we have to complete our solid waste management plan and have something in place by the time our landfill fills up in 2030 mean that those projects have to be put on a shelf, so to speak, while we focus on what we can accomplish before 2030. And in the timeframe, we have to complete the solid waste management plan and get it to the province so that we can actually start actioning some of the the items in it. okay, that's not moving forward. There you go. So for the next two slides, I just want to present sort of a quick timeline of what's been done and what's to come. You can see we kicked off this process in 2022. We had our first engagement process on our guiding principles. Alongside all of that, we've had our Plan Technical Advisory Committee and a number of meetings that have occurred with them to start developing guiding principles, actions for the plan, et cetera. Alongside those P TAC meetings, we also hosted separate sort of municipal staff meetings, including, I believe, a staff person from the Sheshal Nation Government District attended one of these as well. And that was to keep our member municipalities, as well as neighboring jurisdictions like Metro Vancouver, aware of where we are at at the the plan process, to share information, to hear about what neighboring jurisdictions might be working on themselves, and identify any opportunities for collaboration. And so if we come to the current point here where we're at in 2025, you can see that we've got our board update here for for March where we're at here. We'll be presenting the strategies and actions that are included in this package to the public formally. And alongside all of this, we'll be working on completing our feasibility studies on vertical expansion and waste export off coast, ideally so that we meet a timeline of summer of this year for the the board to make a decision on our disposal option, so that we can incorporate that decision into the more final draft plan, which will then go out for public engagement in the fall here before coming back to the board in December for final approval before we send it off to the province. So Sierra and I are happy to take any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Manager Saul. Can you stop sharing your screen? And I see that Director McMahon has a question. Go ahead, Director McMahon.
Yeah, I've seen this, of course, because I've been attending the P TAC meetings, and there's been some really good discussion about the material in this plan. I just noticed that the the graphs are only up to 2022. So before we go out to the public, will we have some newer information to bring forward, particularly since like 2020 and 2021 were somewhat anomalous years for everybody? And we're we're now in whatever the new normal is? Thanks.
Yeah. So so the final drafted plan will include some updated information there. This draft, very draft plan and initiatives is already in the public space through the the P TAC Committee. So the the intent is to update that information in time for a more final drafted plan that, again, hopefully, the board will see later in the summer.
Thank you. Director Lee, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm a little confused about the timeline. I notice in, let's see what page that is. Sorry. Page 57. It talks about the next update of the solid waste management plan in 2035. And you mentioned in one of your slides that the vertical expansion cannot be completed by 2030. I probably misunderstood, so.
Point of information, the the horizontal expansion can't be completed by 2030, not the vertical, correct? Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to move on to the next speaker, which is, oh, you have a question?
Excuse me, Chair. Yeah, I never had my question answered, actually.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yes.
So that's correct, yes. So in terms of citing an entirely new landfill or a lateral expansion to the seashell landfill, neither of those projects can be completed in time for 2030, when our current landfill will reach capacity. However, vertical expansion to the seashell landfill is a project that we may be able to complete in time, and that's something we'll learn through this feasibility project here.
Go ahead, go ahead, Director.
And the 2035 date mentioned, next update, that is, you're still going to update this draft and issue it, and then there's going to be another update after that in 2035. Okay, thank you. I've got it straight now.
Yeah, we can, we have time before the end of the decade to make the landfill taller, just not wider. I'm going to go to Director Stanford.
Thank you. I'm looking at what the province requires for solid waste management plan approval. Where could I find what their criteria is, or is there a basic outline of what their expectation is? And does that change as as we evolve as a government? How does, how do we keep up with their changing priorities?
Go ahead, Manager Saul.
Yes, thank you. So the province does have a guidance document for regional districts on their website, and this sort of outlines how we should go about updating our plans, what should be included in them. There's guidance around what our target should be, what our guiding principles should be. It's it's quite detailed and thorough, laying out what the the process is and what they're looking for essentially when they review a plan that is submitted. The the plans themselves are intended to be updated every 10 years, and so if we get a plan approved by the province and they decide to update their target guidance, et cetera, it doesn't mean we need to immediately develop a new plan. We will be able to wait until that next opportunity to develop a new plan and then incorporate whatever direction the the province is setting for regional districts.
Thank you for the answer. I'm going to look to Director Gabiass.
Thank you, Chair. Happy to see that there's a decision coming to the board in Q3 2025, and my question to staff is, are we going to see both feasibility studies separately in different reports, and ask whether or not we want to keep them rolling? Or are we going to be able to to compare the two at the same time in one report and decide whether we want to go for one or the other or both?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, the the intent is for our consultant working on those to develop a business case comparison between the two options. So the board will be presented with both alongside one another, and and then the the financial argument will be there for one or one or both. The board could choose to pursue both options simultaneously if if they choose, but I I think financially, hopefully, one of them is a little bit of of a clear decision.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to alternate Director Diandretti. It's a mouthful.
Thank you. My question regards the Strategy 10, which is secure short and long term disposal options for the region. So my understanding is it won't be in this update, because, you know, you're just being presented now, but you staff will start working on this until summer? Am I correct? Okay. So when you will get input from municipalities, and if this is, and whether this will be prior to going to the public? I'm sure the S R D is aware how much we value our Gibson's recycling depot, and also there's opportunities for our yard in Henry Road to do even a construction and demolition renovation, maybe sorting out even the burning of invasive species, and this will keep transportation like for residents of Gibson's Area F, E, and D more. Well, we would address part of the greenhouse emissions, so I just would like to hear.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the intent is, once we have a a completed draft, including Strategy 10, long term disposal, that will be going to our board with that completed draft, and then seeking direction to have that third and final engagement with the public and member municipalities. And so I I did already do a presentation to Gibson's Council, I believe in 2023, related to guiding principles. And once we have that completed draft, we will be reaching out again to see if Gibson's would like another presentation.
Thank you. This is, this report is for our information, for the information to the board, to the public. C A O, you have some statements?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add on that there is likely also, there's a formal process for this, but I think there has been an expressed desire to potentially have an intergovernmental once we get further along to have a more coordinated discussion. So that's something that behind the scenes, the C A Os have been talking about, trying to coordinate with the elected officials all together in one room. So what that's going to look like in timing, in alignment with what staff have envisioned, is something we'll continue to explore.
That is a brilliant idea, because we deal with everybody's garbage, so. And I want to point out that the main components exist on this agenda from pages 60 to pages 136. There's a lot of great information on there about the timelines for the different options that are are discussed. I read through it myself. It's, I'm very interested in seeing spring cleanup happen again, but that's just me. As I said, this is for the information of the board and the public, and I thank you for your time. We're going to move on to our final staff report. We have the grant status update. We do we have the manager of budgeting and grants in the room? We do. Oh, we do. Mr. Taylor, would you like to give us an introduction to this, or there's no, no real I'm looking to the directors to see if they have any questions.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
I lean on my vice chair very heavily, and I will look to Kate Stanford, Director for West House Hound. You have a question?
Thank you, Chair. It's always good to see these reports, and I'm never quite sure how much is left for for allocations or where we're at with the actual spending of the money. But I'm looking on page 122, the Application for Disaster Resilience and Innovation Funding Program.
Point of order. It's, yeah, the newer agenda.
I'm always behind on these agendas.
That's okay. It came out this morning. No worries.
But the the project is the Eastbourne groundwater development. We were denied 1.5 million. I just want clarification if staff have the numbers right now, that we had allocated money for this particular project through a different grant, and just making sure we still have money for it, or if my understanding is incorrect.
These are good questions. Who, and, oh, I'm looking for our C A O. She may have, maybe have a word about this.
Yeah, staff don't have that with us right here, but we can, we can get back to the director and give a summary of how that project is intended to be funded.
Okay, and my question is that I see that there are two grants that were denied by U B C M, and is there any follow up that we do with them? Is there any reasoning behind their denying us? Is it, did they run out of money?
Yes, so staff did meet with both contacts at the province in both instances, and they just indicated to us that in both instances, they were well and oversubscribed. Staff did garner further information how to improve going forward.
Thank you. That's great. Looking around, I don't see any of the directors clamoring to, oh, oh, there we go. I knew that word would bring you out, Donna. Director McMahon?
Yeah, you invited me to clamor. I just thought, you know, I I sat here and I started adding up how much we have received in grants, and I think that total is something that we should mention, because that's a lot of money that staff have gotten for us that's not coming out of taxpayers' pockets, and and it's appreciated.
Very much so. C A O?
We do highlight that in our annual report, and I don't know if we highlighted in our, definitely put it in our budget book as well, but from a a press release or a celebrating of news, we can contemplate that with our communications team as to how we can illuminate that in the public, because, yeah, thank you.
Yes, I think the work that our staff do to find funds to, for the projects that the province makes us do, and finding the funds from other sources than our taxpayers is well appreciated by the board, at least. Thank you for your time. I'm going to look for, I'm going to look at the top of my agenda, and I don't see any communications. I don't see any new business. There is no in camera, so I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn this committee, the whole. I see a motion, a second, all in favor? Very good. That one's, that one's, another one in the books? Thank you.